I've got six of them. We've got a quorum, our final meeting, order to clerk this call, all right?
Harry Adams.
Here.
Tim Cooley.
Here.
David Gerhardt.
Here.
Freddie Goebel.
Here.
BD Nanery.
Here.
Laura Roberts.
Here.
Les Stapleton.
Here.
Don Willis.
Here.
Freddie, can you give him a minute?
I'd be glad to. Power edge, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you again this evening with city business in mind. May our thoughts be clear, help us in our decisions to be the right ones that you would have us make and for the most people possible. Keep any thoughts of self-righteousness out of our minds, and may we all work together and forward to make the city of Prestonburg forever clean and beautiful. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Motion approved, it's February 11th, 2013, so we have a motion, have a say.
I see.
Any discussion? Not those really high.
Uh-huh.
Both of them, motion approved. Next thing, committee reports.
Our projects committee had our second meeting today. We continue to talk about putting together some sort of a packet for prospective businesses that may want to start up in Prestonburg. We were looking at maybe incentives before, and everything that we could find was kind of geared toward large manufacturers, large businesses. So today, we kind of talked about the idea of just putting together a resource packet about where people could go to find out how to get help, whether it be through small business associations, whether it be coming to talk to Mike Vance here in the city, whether it be working with the big Sandy add, just different things that they could do. So that's one thing that we're going to work on is putting together that packet. We talked about our streetlight problems. We've had several citizens report, streetlights that are out. I'd ask Brian Hall to have the officers create a running list, and they did a fabulous job of that. I'm working on it right now, I have about four or five pages of not only streetlights that were out, but streets that they showed that were checked off as okay. I didn't realize that was as big of a concern as it is until we started this committee, and then people started flooding us with this lights out, that lights out. So Brian has agreed to help me out on that, I appreciate it. It's, I think that's going to work out. Doesn't take long to enter on it on the website, once you get the street names and the poll numbers. We also talked about the possibility of doing a safety town park, maybe at Archer Park. I've met with several people about that. I'll have more of that clear cut out in our next meeting, handouts to everybody. Basically, though, it's a park where we would do summer camps, we would bus kids in to do road safety, stranger safety, poison control safety, water safety, railroad crossing safety. There's a few cities that are doing it, and there's actually a curriculum for that, and Richie's kind of looking at some areas on Archer Park right now where he may want, may want to put that. So it's another project that we're looking at. And then, by the way, everybody is invited in the community to that meeting. It's the first meeting of every month at five o'clock, the second Monday of every month at five o'clock. And everybody's more than welcome to come, we want everybody's input and try to prioritize and see what we can get done. The final thing that, we didn't get to talk a lot about it today, we've talked a lot about it in the past, and we always just kind of, we talk about it and then we kind of get off subject, and that is kind of looking for a spot to put a possible community center. And I know we've talked about the spot out here, we've talked about the spot over at Cliff, and then we've talked about money for it. I think that one thing that's very important for us to do is maybe look at, I mean, we've talked about it for purchasing a site. That way, if we do have the opportunity and the funds come along to do something, we're ready to go. And also by purchasing a site, if that didn't work out, I mean, we would have something that we could market for a big business or some larger business or businesses to come on to. And then we run into the problem of funds to do that. Where are we going to give the money to come up with a purchase like that? One way that we could do it, I know we have a loan right now that is somewhere in the vicinity, putting a few things together of a million dollars. Some of us are talking about the possibility of borrowing the money to purchase a place, extending, bidding it out, extending that loan to 20 years. So where it wouldn't affect our current budget, we would be able to just pay the payments that we're currently budgeting right now, but it would take those loan payments out to a rate where we could do that. Some of the prices that we've seen, I'm not sure, what was the cliffside price? Did we get a price on that, eight hundred thousand?
They said it would change by the month. They, as they paid interest on the price, the property would go up because they would have that amount of money in it. And of course, some of that, we've got to take the hill off the field.
Right.
And some of it, there's some like a swampy area, we'd have a drain tile some of it, and field hit a little bit for parking. Parking could be down in the flood plain, just the building itself.
What was that, your property, yeah?
The side of Keith's house, with the swans and Keith's house.
The last time they did fielding over there, we drowned it a bunch of yards.
Right.
Well, that's another problem. They're going to have to be, when that is filled, there's going to be a pipe to the underneath the railroad to the...
The big creek.
The...
That's a little major, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, take it on in, you'll be able to see a section major, but...
We're looking about thirty six, ten, twenty dollars away, and it'll have to be down.
The other side that I've got the most attention about, and asking my questions, and I've talked to some of you guys, is the side out here, the old grade school side. And it was right around a million dollars, is that kind of the number we had grown out at us?
When some of us met with Will or Willard asked me to go back and ask him, and he threw, he, the citizens said the work he's done on it, that he felt the property was worth a million and a half, but he would take like a tax credit letter for five, and well, let's have it for a million. But we might be able to go back to him and get it down here a little bit more.
Right, I mean, you know, if we could have purchased that for five hundred thousand before, you know, at first I thought about, well, we could have purchased it for five hundred thousand, but then you've got to look at all of the teardown, the fieldwork, the hauling, all that stuff off. If you look at that, I mean, it's probably going to jack it up there, close to that anyway. I mean, if we wanted to try to look at buying a piece of property like this, it's right in the middle of our town, it's something that if we get the funds, or we get the opportunity to do a community center, we can do it. If absolutely not, we could go out and market this property, you know, in the middle of our town. And if we can do it and extend the rate out to where it's already budgeted, yeah, we're going to be paying for it, you know, twice as long, but, you know, we're making that payment of something that we can actually use. So, you know, that's an idea that I had, and I want to look at trying to do a motion tonight to, if we thought that we could afford that, and if we thought that the payments would stay the same, and it's thought it was something that we would want to do, is make a motion to bid that out to the bank, and see if we may even be able to get a better interest rate. I mean, it's what, three point two five right now?
The last one we got was one point.
One point nine on the street sweep. So we may even be able to get something closer to, you know, right under two, two on that, on that deal. And then, you know, we've got this piece of property that's right here in our town, it's ours forever, and, I mean, you know, if not a community center, then we can go market it out to somebody, come in, direct jobs or whatnot, but at least we have it. With the money saved, I know, and you can talk a little bit more about this, but with the money saved, if we can go back and get it under a million, whether it be fifty thousand, sixty thousand, we talked about the idea of putting an enclosed facility on Stonecrest for football practice, baseball practice, soccer practice. Didn't we already have some of the materials?
We got some, Richard Benham gets some quotes. He gave me one today from one company that was a hundred foot two hundred, and I think it was right at fifty, fifty-one thousand somewhere in that neighborhood. Now, that's just the frame, we would have to come up with all the tin and insulation and all that. But I know Les had said something about we could probably get help from other people about, well, I know the baseball, the baseball building we have up here right now, the parents have raised all the money to do anything that we've been done to it.
Right.
So I'm sure that any groups who want to use it, they will unveil it, that they're going to have access to it.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would want, yeah, that's why we would do it, absolutely, for our teams to be able to use it in the area. And if we could, you know, cut this down enough to where we could purchase this property and then have the money left over, go ahead and build that, we would be getting, you know, two things for one project. I don't know, I just think we need to either make a move and purchase a place, that way we've got it, we can call it our home, and it's ready to go. And like I said, if something happens, we all want a community center, if something happens, it blows up, we go out and market it and see who we can get on there. But it's something that we've got, you know, from now on. It's right in the middle of our town.
Nathan, let me ask you a question. If, if, if we had ownership of property, that would, as I understand and recall, that would help our grant process that much more possibly for funding for that. Can you use that like for matching part of things?
Potentially. With certain grant funds, if you've already expended dollars, they won't count it as match, however.
Even though it's real property?
Correct. If you've already spent the dollars. So we'd have to be careful about that, but potentially, of course, that looks favorable if you already have a piece of property available for a project. It always looks better with the funding agency.
So what we're really saying is until we've got a piece of property, we might as well forget the community center.
Well, I mean, I just think it'd make it easier if we already owned a piece of property. I would, and plus, it's right here, it's right in the middle of everything that we, smack dab in the middle of our city. I don't know, I'm not saying forget about it, but I think that that would definitely make things a lot easier when the time comes, or maybe even get the ball started with some grant money, with some funds, if you've got a piece of property sitting there ready to go. And anybody, I know like Willard before, didn't he, he was kind of waiting on a piece of property, was he to, maybe if he was going to help out?
And he can't design it, and the cost of it, you know, we can put...
And, you know, that's not saying that Willard's going to do anything or anybody else like that's going to do anything, but I think they would be more apt to if we had a piece of property sitting there. I mean, I don't think it would be a loss, even, you know, heaven forbid we don't get to do a community center. I still don't think it'd be a lost cause, I still think we would have a nice piece of property out here to go market ourselves. And if we could get...
Everybody I've talked to has wanted it in town anyway. Or anybody that's talked with me.
If we could get the facility on Stonecrest to go along with it, you know, that'd be great, having it for a place like that.
Well, I knew this guy, so just shoot me down wherever you want to, Harry, I know you would. So what you're saying is, I just want to try and stand corrected. I know you would ask that, Harry, that's what I wanted to do. And you're saying that we go ahead and get loans, we would.
Bid it out.
Bid it out.
Extend the loan.
Extend the loan.
Extend the loan.
What we already have.
Right, but do we know exactly how much we're going to get that property for yet? That's the question.
Well, he priced it for a million.
For a million.
I think it would give better.
Okay. I agree a hundred percent that we need it here in town, and what do you have out here? Now, my next question would be, how much work are we going to do over here on this to get it, it's below the flood plain right now, isn't it? Or isn't it?
How much below is that? I know they fielded some, but not...
I can tell you from this, the first lot in my building to the flood plain.
First lot in your building?
You can see how far it is.
No, you're talking about at least six feet.
Fifteen, fifteen feet.
At least some seven feet. So we want to build it up, and you said there's a water problem over there right now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think I would be, at this point, this early on stage, I think I would be supportive of trying to find out what it would cost us to borrow the money, but now I don't think we ought to be bidding out.
Well, that's what we'd be doing, just bidding out the...
I mean, if you want to go with proposals, well, some of the banks would be willing, or what our costs would be, and what our objective payments would be. If we're talking about actually bidding out and getting a loan, I don't think I can afford that at this early stage.
That's absolutely right.
I'm not sure what we want, I don't know what the price is going to be, and, you know, there's still a lot of questions swirling around the property. I think, you know, it's, it upsets me that we talked about purchasing that property before, and obviously had an opportunity to purchase it at a much lower price, and now we're coming back in and trying to buy it for almost double what we could have bought it for before. That, that is the same.
No, I thought the same thing, yeah.
If it wasn't a good deal then, why is it a good deal now? And is that even a fair price?
Well, the English would be one thing.
No way, not one person's mentioned getting an appraisal on it to see if that's a fair price or not.
Then what is it going to cost to run a new line from flood to here, because you've got this creek coming in? Who knows, you know, the engineering part of it, and then how many feet you've got to fill, and what that's going to cost? You know, that's a lot out there.
I want to make it real clear, I am all for the community center, I think the center of town is the best place for it. But if we get ourselves into buying one, we can't...
When we very first got, started talking about this, I'm all for it.
Of course, I'm saying, I...
There's no doubt, I don't want to be that, I don't, hey, that little Adam's boy doesn't want it. Yeah, I do, I want to know what it costs. Tell me what it's going to cost to run it, what's the payment's going to be after we get it? Now, we've got two elephants now, we've got one over here that we got for free, that's expensive, and we've got one up on the hill that came, that came free, we were blessed. We, you know, when money was booming, we got it paid for, and it's expensive to maintain. And nobody, when we talked about it, could even remotely tell me what it's going to cost to maintain the thing. How many employees, you know, what's it cost to run it? We haven't come up with that yet. And entertaining interest rates, if they'll lock it in for ever so long, it's not a bad idea. But we're going to have a lot, I have to have more answers before I start to know.
Well, my concern is right now, because I'm going to be, honestly, my sons would probably enjoy the complex in Mount County as much as anybody in the world does. But right now, they're in financial dire straits.
Uh-huh.
And I don't want to see that happen to us, us coming up with something here, then end up losing it for whatever reason, and some company comes in, next thing you know, it's a bigger headache than it is, you know, that's...
Tell me what it costs, I tell you what it is. We look at the numbers, see if we can afford it, because...
I would do anything in the world I could do to get us right. I want to understand more of what you're saying. I'm all for having kids, having something to do.
Before you can come up with what it costs to run it, you have to figure out what it costs.
Well, I understand, but, I mean, you know, you know, you estimate it takes 20 people, you know, about what it's going to do, you've got to give us an idea of what we're going to do. And I'm not knocking it, I want it, but I've got to have it.
Yeah, there's some information, I mean, there's some information, I mean, we had some plans drawn up, plans drawn up that were suitable to this site, been a long time. Randy volunteered a whole lot of his time and provided plans, I mean, there's some, maybe that's something the projects committee can take up. They could do this work up.
They could do it, really.
I'm sure they could do it.
I might want to, I don't want to interrupt council, we're talking, but I'm not going to speak up, but we did have a big building study done on that lot last year. I got a $10,000 grant from Brushy for it to help us do a design and a big building study. It's not completed, but they looked at three sites, and one of them was the cliffside, one of them was the college, actually, they had some space.
Right.
And this one, of course, we had two community meetings in this room that I think we invited everyone to, and had good participation. The community, as well as the architects that were involved, felt like this was the best site. I've got a footprint drawing of it on this site. I'm going to ask them for a little more work, because personally, I think they need to do some more work for us to be happy with what they started. And that would be, they gave us a list, or we gave them a list, and they worked it back to us on what all we want in that building, okay? And now from that, what I'd like to see them do is do a kind of preliminary design, just like you felt, I would like to have some metrics, that's what it's going to cost to operate, you know, what are we looking at as far as the number of employees? And I could, I could probably estimate that myself, but I don't want to do it if we don't know what's going to set that bill. At that point, you become a little more in touch with what it actually not costs to operate such a community center. One thing that's been mentioned here, and the community mentioned it in those meetings, was they want, everybody wants an indoor pool. Well, that's going to put the cost up there with the knock canyon. And so you've got to, you've got to look at it, I think, I think the feasibility of it is still the question, that's what you guys are talking about, and I fully understand that. Feasibility of it is what's in question. The one thing we know is this is the preferred site for a lot of folks now, you know, so it's...
It's going to be accessible to more people.
It'd be accessible to more people.
It would help our downtown.
They actually have done a little preliminary dollar, have not been into town and improved some of the, you know, sidewalks and streets that we've run out of town. So I like the idea of putting it in, and I think we can work with that. I also know that from writing grants, that we do have to have something to bring to the table if we decide to really go here with this, and that would be a good piece. But, but I think, I think there's work to be done on how it would actually operate, and what it would cost, and that kind of stuff, that we can get completed pretty quickly if we want to get there, and shooting cops, they say we want money to get that done. That's my thinking.
I mean, I don't, I don't want to stop the project, but I, you know, I do have the questions, you know, you need to know those things before...
Right.
Can I ask Mike, do you want to ask Mike a question? I feel so... I'm not going to make no, I'm telling my way around here, I'm not going to...
Unless you can only use execute twice.
I think this feasibility study, did it actually give us some idea of what, what kind of people would be, how many people would be joining, how many people would be utilizing it? Is there anything like that?
And that's something we might not be able to get with that, Denise can help you where she's at, but I think we might ought to try to get that estimate, because in years, there are a lot of people having interest in it, but how many would actually use it and pay membership, we need to know that.
Well, that's something, and, and again, I'm going back, you know, I've taken sons to knock canyon.
Yeah.
And you can't go over to knock canyon right now, it's in half Florida county over there.
That's true, they're using more knock canyon.
You go to the white and say, you're going to see half the other in Florida county.
Florida county.
And I think, I think as far as, once we initially get it in, I wouldn't see a problem with operating, but getting it in, getting it set up, is all...
Well, and what it costs to get it in too. The other thing to address real quickly is that it is in floodway, and it would need to be 12 feet off the ground, according to what the architects already told me. And we talked about, in order to handle that issue, was to put the fire and police on the bottom of it, and actually have a new area where they can operate that one.
Well, this patch, we've got more money, we've got to go fire it.
That kind of stuff, so, you know, and also to go for other grants, security, all those kinds of things, depending on the budget.
Is that 12 feet from the back sidewalk or about here?
I think it's 12 feet from the back sidewalk.
So we put the fire and police down the flood plain?
Well, it would be... It would be optimized, they just had, they moved the video.
Now, they're good swimmers. Well, a lot of that too can be floodproof, can, can.
Yeah, I was going to say, commercial, if you can go to flood proof, right, you don't have necessarily to field. Commercial can be floodproof.
And that's what they do with...
Like they did with the new farmers.
So if we're going to do that, why couldn't we just utilize that for parking and just, we're going to make two things at one time, and we'll have more fields for the kids playing out front?
Yeah, right. That's the other option.
I'm sorry, I'm saying, that's why I'm...
Sorry.
A little fucked up with you. I might get kicked in the teeth, Larry.
No.
That's okay, Freddie's got me checking on this side.
Well, what kind of timeframe are we looking at possibly, or maybe getting some answers to some of these questions?
Well, I can, I can ask Summit for some more work that I want him to do, and I think within, but maybe for the next meeting, that's all.
Well, then why don't we at least do some digging on some pricing of the money?
It doesn't cost anything.
Can we do that?
Don't put yourself in a position, I don't mean price.
Yeah, I would have no problem with that.
Well, even, even, didn't borrow the two million, we might want to get a price on a million and two million, because if we can drop from 325 down to 191, it's going to save us a lot.
If we can get it before next meeting, that'd be great.
We're going to do, I mean, you know, some of it, they'll do, some of it like this type, kind of go back to use...
At least it'd be something we can...
Experience on.
Give us a roll that start.
I would like to move along with that price on, because that'd be me, but I'm having trouble with that.
I'd just like to know...
I'd like to know what it's worth appraised by, so...
That, and then what we would take, if we were to buy it for 500,000, what it would take us to get it, what it would be.
I would definitely do a motion to get us an appraisal of that property, see what's worth, I would definitely do one. I make a motion, and we get an appraisal on the proxy, going in to see if we're going to be in the top part.
Take it, take it.
And then you want to see what we can get, you know, interest rates checked?
Motion to bid out financing, to refinance and up to two million.
Up to two million, um...
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Any visitors here?
As you all know, of course, right at less, seeing that here many times, April 1 is a renewal of the city's group health insurance. And the last couple of years has been a major eventful time for health insurance with the Affordable Care Act, which most of us know as Obamacare, but it's a lot of changes, a lot of federal mandates that's happened. And Anthem Blue Cross, they're in the process of making major system changes to try to be able to administer what the federal mandates are. And so what they're doing, they have actually moved in what they call a new platform 6.0, which is going to be, what they tell me, easier for them to administer the Affordable Care Act. So what they're trying to do, they're trying to encourage groups that are on the older platform to move to the new policy platform, and to be honest with you, they're making it somewhat enticing to do that. I got the renewal back in February, and it took me about 30 seconds to hit the reply button and send it back. They started out at seven, I think it's 17:09, and I sent it back to them, and I said, there's no way that I'm going to stand before city council without armor on. So then they come back at 9:07, and then the lady said, you know, we're going to this new platform, would they consider a minor plan change? I said, if the price is right, they'll consider it. So if you'll turn in your book, and I'll kindly, I'll try to lay it out for you, where it's almost a no-brainer to me. If you look on the left side columns, the top column is, on the left side, is what the current contract is. Okay, so if you look at the upper left-hand square, that is the core plan. This is the plan that the city provides to the employees and eligible dependents. Okay, I negotiated that down to a 6.5% increase if you didn't want to move off that platform. But in talking to them, should come back to the new platform, but you move straight over to your right, and there's one minor change in that plan.
That's a deal.
That's right. It takes the emergency, and I think it's a good change. It takes the emergency room co-pay from 200 to 250. And that is the only change in the plan, except it makes the rate actually a little bit less than what it currently is. Well, point seven, let's want to say. Now, it's about a $30,000 savings annually, just switching platforms. And that's basically the difference in the increase. Now, the, and let me go back to, because I'm gone, I spoke to a little bit before meeting. We have been pretty successful in keeping health rates for the city. I look back four years, we have not incurred a major increase in here in four years. Now, however, we did change the benefits drastically, and it was either that or a major, major increase. But I want to tell you something, it's not been perfect, but I'll tell you this, it's worked. It has leveled off these crazy rate increases that a lot of groups are seeing today of 20 and 30%. And with the addition of the benefit that you all provided to the employees... And with the addition of the benefit that you all provided to the employees, I don't know if you remember the medical bridge policy. There's been numerous employees that has filed claims and received those dollars to help offset their deductions. So it's worked, it's worked. And when, you know, when I can stand in front of a group and look and show you a rate that's actually less than what you're paying, that only happens about once in a lifetime. Normally, I'm like, I didn't mean it, it's my fault, you know. So that is the core plan. If you all would consider moving the platform to the new policy, then actually it's gonna result in a little bit less than you're currently paying. If you move down to the bottom two squares, those are buy up plans. And what that is, is we, last year, we put in a program where if an employee wanted to buy a better policy, they could pay the difference between the core plan and the buy up plan. Well, I thought I had pretty good results with the core plan, so I get to looking at the new platform on the buy up plan. So what I was able to do was actually lower the deductible dramatically for the buy up plan. It makes it more enticing, makes it more worth the money to an employee to buy up, going from fifteen hundred deductible down to a thousand dollar deductible. And actually, it's less of a rate because of the platform change.
It is cheaper too.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, so, we don't have very many people buying up, okay? And I think part of that, well, the major part of it is cost, there's no doubt about it. I mean, you know, when people see the actual cost of this group health insurance, they get sticked. But one thing that's helped the employees from not having a buy up is that medical bridge policy. That's been a big plus, cause in most cases, it puts fifteen hundred dollars in their hand and then they can go to the hospital and negotiate the bill. And it works. It does work. I have also included in the packet a very detailed benefit summary. And I've written at the top, if you chose to accept my proposal as an proposal here, just so you would see for yourself the two thousand twelve plan. If you turn over the two thousand thirteen new platform version and then the buy up plan at the end. And any questions so far? I tried to do this in a way, cause I know you guys don't look at this stuff every day, it can get very confusing.
What did you say the savings was on that, the one we stated?
Between the core plan? It is.
Thirty, thirty thousand? You said thirty?
Yeah, it's right here, I put it right there. What it is, it's about a seven percent. If you take the six point five increase you're not gonna incur, plus the point seven deductible, it's about, it equals about seven percent premium.
So let's see, if our case, what we're doing is the possibility of an ER copay goes up fifty bucks a month.
That's correct.
That's a lot of business to pay sales for, it's like thirty thousand dollars. How many ER visits do you make?
I think you're gonna see a time in the next few years where ER visit copays. Thirty thousand dollars. Cause they're trying to encourage people to stay out of emergency rooms once they got bigger.
Thirty thousand dollars is a lot of empty customers.
I agree.
Visits.
I agree. I don't want to take that.
Well, how many people did?
I don't, that's protected under hip, I don't know.
Now, is, what I understand, like the person who ever went.
I, I probably have personal knowledge and maybe, and it's just people coming to me to help with claims and things, maybe ten. I mean, it's not.
Well, I don't want to take away from, certainly don't want to shake anybody's finger, but the lower you from two hundred to two fifty is an deductible. That's not a good, it's thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You gotta start looking at how many ER visits you, that's assuming.
I think it's a small change, it's a minute change when you consider. And, you know, here's the thing about it, to keep the cost essentially flat in today's world, it's just not, I mean, it's. I think if I was an employee, I would be more concerned about, are they gonna be able to continue paying my premiums? You know, that's what's in the back of their minds, I can tell you. Cause I talk to the employees and they're like, well, you know, if I have to pay for my family, I might, you know. I mean, that's their big concern, and I don't want to speak for them, but I talk to a lot of them. And this allows you to keep it flat as far as the cost.
And not to look at your horse in the mouth, cause it decreases great, and I trust what I'm gonna do, but once you say a platform change, what does that mean?
What, really, the claim, the claim E L Bs are gonna have a little bit of a different look, based on what they did, they're getting their computers.
And that's administration change, it's administrative change, the plans won't work the same.
Yes.
We can prepare this.
The Department of Insurance tells Anthem, you gotta keep those old plans going for at least two years for the people that want them. Well, they're sitting there with a whole different platform of people and machines. So what they're trying to do is they're trying to entice groups to go ahead and move to the new platform because the end result, they're all gonna be there anyway, and the sooner the better.
I just want to make sure there wasn't a surprise.
No, there is no surprise, it's unlimited benefits, same out pocket, same copays, same, I mean.
There, was that the little medical chip that goes in your wrist when you plan?
I hope not. I mean, how do you guys feel about that? What do you think?
Okay, I took my child to ER last year, she had a fever of a hundred and four point five, she was admitted. So I didn't want ER visit, so I'll admit it.
Yeah, if you're admitted, that's not a lot.
Why? Those are not the people we're concerned about, it's the people that go to the ER instead of the doctor. When you walk through the door, and Dawn's probably in a better position, I can tell you.
Thousand bucks.
Before that, yeah, it's more like that, before they touch you.
If that's the only change to him, I mean, to keep our insurance.
I mean, that's a big difference.
It's a good deal for employees.
So we're actually technically not saving, we're just not having to pay the increase. Is that?
Well.
But.
Cause if we're saving, why can't we go to higher tier?
You're saving the point seven, you're saving.
If we're saving thirty, this would.
No, no, no.
If we're saving, we're just not paying him.
You're looking at, you're looking at a seven percent increase on the old platform. What I was trying to do is to get the number flat.
Right, say we're, pretty much we're.
Right, that was my goal.
That's not thirty thousand dollar increase to bottom line.
Right.
But what about the medical bridge? Does it change?
The medical bridge, to my knowledge, I've received nothing on it changed.
So the only difference is the, from two hundred dollar copay at ER to two fifty, that's the only difference. No brainer.
Of course, you saw the changes. Thanks, guys, I just want to make sure, you know, your concern, your primary concern, I want to make sure.
I had an officer, passed out, dispatcher. We didn't want to pay to go to the doctor, they paid.
The two hundred?
No, he didn't, we don't want to go to the doctor, you know, I ain't go to the doctor, I don't go to the doctor. They, you know, they don't want to go.
Afraid of needles?
I'm afraid of needles and I don't have the kind of money to pay one, you know, but, you know, it's better than nothing, so, you know, we take what we get, you know.
I hear you say you're afraid of needles.
Afraid of needles.
Me too.
He says quick to, let's give it to John Huntsman.
Well, no, I really, I didn't say that, but I am saying, but I didn't say it, I just, nobody wants to go. George Hudson passed out.
Why?
No, 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 why passed out?
Why don't they want to go?
It just, it just, you don't know what you're gonna have.
I had, I had to go there and say with him in the emergency room and basically force him to go ahead and get treated and find out what was wrong because he's still paying from the last time he was in hospital.
I can bounce back, cause I saw him down there.
Any other update? No, I move on to your business. Approval of two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve financial audit.
Does everybody got a copy of that report? First of all, I thank you guys again for the opportunity to do your audit. I apologize for the way I think I was sick once and a couple things, and one of them being canceled. Turn to page forty-two of the audit. The type of reports you guys got said the mayor was unqualified, which is good, that's a good opinion. Same as last year, there was a couple of significant deficiencies, which is the same as last year, segregation of duties and some material adjustments. Again, that's the same thing happened last year, that hasn't changed, okay? If you go to page twenty-nine.
Were we supposed to put something in, in effect, cure those problems last year?
The one is segregation of duties, due to the number of personnel in the city, you probably will never change that. The other one was the material adjustment, which means basically, you guys don't have a formal set of financial statements, you have a trial balance. And whoever comes in has to adjust the books for financial statements, okay? So I hope if you ever fix that, fix the process, I'll take it back, she's actually trying to do a formal balance sheet.
I think we're gonna be there this year.
Do what?
I think we're gonna have a formal set.
Yeah, she's also working on depreciation and all that stuff too, so she may actually have a balance sheet in the future. She doesn't, she didn't have it last year, so that's the reason for the adjustments. Now, she has a trial balance, which I see the numbers, dividends and credits, but I can't see a formal balance sheet or a profit and loss. So that's the reason for the adjustments. Page twenty-nine. The only fund that you all budget here in the city is the general fund, okay? You don't do a budget for special revenue. So this is a comparison of the general fund. If you look at the bottom line, left hand corner, right hand corners, you'll see a surplus of thirty thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. Which you can tell up through there, what was increases, what was decreases. However, if you'll go to the page I just replaced in your book, page seven. You will see side by side what happened in the general fund, if you go four lines up from the bottom, you'll see the change in fund balance on page seven is thirty thousand six seventy-four. You'll see the next line across, that's special revenue, it had debts of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So in other words, you spent two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars more than you had in revenue during that time period. Now, what that was, was capital projects, basically, infrastructure, road, sidewalks, that type of stuff. So if you look at your general fund, it's a little bit construed, it shows a thirty thousand dollar surplus, but if you look at special revenues, you got a deficit, okay? So I didn't want y'all to be confused thinking, I tell you you have a thirty thousand dollar surplus, you really don't, you really got a deficit.
What funds are those kind of, what type of expenditures are?
What are we gonna make?
How do we spend?
Well, we've just had money accumulated over the years in coal and mineral and municipal road aid, it accumulated over the last three, four years, and then it was spent last year.
So we're spending excess of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars.
As what we actually took in last fiscal year, yeah.
Municipal road aid funds.
Some of that was especially recognized, we got one from the state.
It was stuff we had that from the last couple of years that we hadn't spent it, it was like.
How do we spend two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars we don't have?
We had it, it was the bank.
They had, it was in the checking account, the checking account decreased by two hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Then we did overspend.
You did overspend, you spent your money, it was over, the revenue was spent, your revenue was not there to compensate for it.
What you're going on is you're calling it for a year's expenditures that money's accumulated over a year.
Yeah, if we had a lot of other things, all that said, cash in banks, first day of the year, we add that and then add all the revenues and subtract expenses.
We had a certain amount of money each year for blacktop and stuff. And if we don't spend all that this year, it's like we have twice as much of it next year. And we spend, last year's what we saved, plus the year we got now, then that makes it goes over. But you got the money, cause it's still laying there from year before.
And you got fiscal years that cross different from calendar years.
And we've talked about this before, we don't really get, at this point, any type of printout of what we're spending on municipal road aid funds, what we're spending on co-servants money.
I can.
Well, also, you don't have a budget for special revenue, I mean, probably special revenue funds is a good budget, just like a general fund, see what you're gonna spend the money. You don't have one adopted, I mean, so that's the reason I gave you this report to show you was, special revenue has a deficit, general fund has a surplus. I mean, I can't sit here and tell you that general fund, yeah, you're doing great, you got a thirty thousand dollar surplus, which I'm looking at the books, you don't. So in the future, it might be a good idea for you guys to start budgeting your special revenue accounts also, so you guys can adopt it, you guys can maintain what's going on. On campus.
We can do it, I mean, it's just a matter of.
And I'd like to, I think we need to see what's being spent out of these special revenue funds on a regular basis.
Wouldn't it be either detract for you anymore?
It's.
Probably already.
I mean, I can. Yeah, it's just a matter of setting it up, but the thing is, you've got all these special revenue, you have, you know, you've got nine one one money, you can start budgeting that too. The Gen Line Festival, doing on a budget how they want to spend their money, the Prestonburg Motorsports. You know, there's a lot of things that fall under that, but what we can do is let a committee submit a budget and then say, yeah, no, we approve how you want to spend your money.
My recommendation is budget everything, where you often see it.
We're already doing that for those boys.
Or are we liable for it too?
Yeah, so, me and the mayor and Sharon, whenever we sign the checks on those accounts, so.
Do you have a budget committee yet? Or finance committee? I think so, I think the best one is up there. Anyway, there's that, now, also, we had some findings in the back, go to page forty-six, fifty-six, forty-six first. I'm not gonna read all these to you, I'm just gonna give you a couple highlights of some of them, a lot of this is repetitive, same stuff last year.
Now, is this stuff that can be cured or not?
Yes, everything in the back of this report can be cured, yes. The two I gave you earlier probably can't be, but these can be cured.
So there's hope?
There's hope. The first one is, same as last year, this was on there, some late payment of insurance, it's number three. Help life and general advantage paid late on several carriages. Just looked at page, retirement was paid late a couple times. Some filings weren't filed timely and the payment for retirement was late a couple times. At the bottom of that, number seven, there was some stuff that was spent out of the capital capital projects, but the road aid and co-servants that wasn't bid. You know, it's modeled appearance twenty thousand dollars. There was some sidewalk projects and members and other stuff that didn't get bid, so there's some bidding requirements that wasn't met for the special revenue accounts, which is another reason why you need to budget, keep up with it.
Getting back to why we need to see what's being spent, what's being spent on, how much is being spent?
If you go to page forty-eight, number eleven. Out of all of them, this is the one, I guess, if I had to pick one that was close to being material, but I couldn't come up with a number, was this one, occupational net profits. I did two tests, basically, I left here, drove this way to the map, to the bottom of Stone Chris, I wrote down twenty business names. I came back, forty-five percent of those were paying and filing occupational and net profit points. I said, okay, I'll try another test, so I drove here and drove to another office, in my fact, during the parking lot. Twenty-one names, that time, fifty-two percent of those were filing and paying net profits and occupations. So all in all, I took a forty sample business test, fifty percent of them were filing their occupational tax forms and paying for tax. So I quit, yes, okay. I couldn't come up with a number that made it, that was the only thing in the audit that was close to changing the report. If I could account some way of determining how many businesses in the town that it wasn't, and come up with some number, it would change your report from unqualified to pro-qualified, okay? I could not come up with that number. And the only I could is, basically, I had to do a business in town. I could not come up with that number. And the only I could is basically I had to do a business in town with taxes, and I know some of them that weren't filed. But that number is hard to come up with. So my suggestion to management was to police that a little better. We read the ordinance. There's not a whole lot of penalty in there for people that don't file. There's more penalty in there for guys that, if you all did, gave their personal information out. More penalty on the city than there were people not filing. So you bet, I think it's changed the forms and stuff now, haven't you, Ed?
Yeah, I made the form blue, a little tougher. There's red ink on there.
Are you, are you, this may sound stupid, but are you telling me that close to fifty percent of the businesses in this town are not paying their occupational tax? Is that what you're telling?
Fifty percent of the ones he checked?
The ones I checked, yes.
Well, but I mean.
I mean, I just took random. I just thought, wrote down the, and I did not pick any subcontractors. Anybody, I wrote names down off the doors for the buildings. I mean, I just thought, wrote name down, wrote down. I picked twenty this way, twenty that way. And I did not go anywhere. If I already got forty, I quit. Fifty percent of them was filed, so well, shoot.
We've got people that we've sent police to, delivered forms. I've called, I've threatened.
This number could be huge. I don't know. It could be small, it could be huge.
You pay yours?
I hope so.
It's not fair to him or anybody else that's paying theirs in this town. That's not, that's not right.
I agree.
And what you were saying was, man, you really don't have a lot of legal recourse because there is no penalties or any tax terms. Is that what you're saying?
We pulled the ordinance and looked at them. I mean, there's, I don't remember exactly.
There's more penalty against me if I tell you that such and such business, they, or that, or like somebody that works for them makes this amount of money. If I tell you that, I could go to prison. But if then somebody down here doesn't pay it, well, we can fine them.
I don't know if you guys can change some kind of ordinance or something that will more legally make it through.
I think we need to take a look at that ordinance.
Yeah, when you.
Shut them down.
We don't pay.
Our ass will if you don't pay them.
There's nothing in the ordinance that says that we can close them down if they do not pay their tax.
Well, I know there's other towns around here that they do that. They shut community don't pay taxes.
City, city people, I mean, they will send a police officer out with a subpoena and you're required to appear in court.
And the only reason we know this is because we have clients in Pico. I've had a couple of them.
And they get your advantage, then you get to see what their ordinance is.
Theirs is exactly like ours. I pulled it off the internet.
Well.
It was the state's ordinance that every city had.
Watch your neighbors doing, and him knows if that's right. Won't you go to the state level and see what we can do?
What we can do.
You know, that's.
I mean, it's frustrating to me because, you know, it's like I've got, I've started files on my desk of people that I've called. I've been trying to document when I called. I'm sending them letters, making copies. That way, if we ever do file a case, proving that I am attempting to try to collect their taxes. But, you know, I get on Facebook and see people that are taking trips and vacations, and I'm like, oh, they not pay no taxes.
Well, it's not just that. That's not the part that burns me. The part that, it's fairness is what burns me.
I pay my taxes.
And that's what, if another business is paying theirs and one of the side is not, that's just not right. Would, would legal cities be able to help us on this?
I mean, I thought the first step was to get a better tax form.
Get Mr. Chaney involved in it.
I would say yes. I'd say we would represent. But I mean, of all of them in the back, this was the one I was stuck on. I really.
Yeah, but we do have some penalties.
We can't collect the tax, so I'm not gonna collect the penalty.
That's the problem. That's the problem. The ones that I saw was filed late, they still weren't collecting the penalty. The ones that paid the taxes didn't care.
There's no, there's no hearing.
And by some.
They're chained.
Well, you know, we haven't uncovered it yet. There has to be something in the books to do this by the state level.
I was going to say the same ordinance, and they're sending officers to the door and shutting them down.
It must be legal to do that.
We see officers that we have sent now, but that's, you all have to go on, face on face.
Lester, you guys collected one point nine million in occupational taxing business taxes, basically. Now, what number should that have been?
So what you're saying is. What you're saying is that your new, your new center could have been paid for. Everything else could have been paid for if we collected.
May get you out of financial problems, yes.
If the percentages are consistent to your findings on the little two tests that you did.
Exactly.
You're looking at a half of it.
Exactly. That, that's where I was stuck. I couldn't figure out a number to come up with.
Good chance of chance, too.
You're gonna make surprise of some of the people that's not paying.
Who, who in city government is responsible for seeing that businesses pay their occupational tax?
Ultimately, it comes back to council.
The council is.
Good answer, mate.
Ultimately, you're the governing body. I'm not gonna say me, but ultimately, it's you.
Steve might want to refresh that stuff.
Exactly. We get a list of every business in the city.
Well, all right. I can make, I can't tell you, but I can make a suggestion, okay? Find someone to basically map the town. Have them just go out like I did. Go to a section, write all the business names down, and come back and see if they're filed. If they're not, address a section at a time. You can't do the whole city at one time. Pick a section, pick a section.
See, I sat down in the elevator just one day.
We have some that take ten years.
Obviously, if they do, if they're operating in town, they have to have a city license on them.
They're supposed to.
They're supposed to.
These same people don't have a business license.
If they don't have a business license, they should go file a tax.
If they don't come register for a business license, you don't know the city.
Okay, what's our recourse there? Now, that might be the easiest way you're setting it down. If they're operating in our city without a license that's required.
If they don't have a license, then Bobby.
Shut the utility down.
Yeah. Bobby, is that.
All you're running through there is that some of these people leased from people that do pay their property. I mean, they're, they're physical.
I mean, all due respect, we make the laws. We don't enforce the laws. We don't manage the city. That's city management's job. Why is it somebody working on this? I mean, how many years have we seen the same problems in the back of this audit report? I make a motion right now to have a written report within thirty days on each one of these things that you pointed out, as to what's been corrected, what's not been corrected, what steps have been taken to correct them. I haven't seen one. Six years now, four years.
And then that report's the same thing as the same thing.
Same thing. I've been working on it.
Same thing, not being corrected, right?
Most of them are.
Yeah, like the two-party check, there are two parties supposed to sign.
Payable balances. How are we doing?
That's not being done, is it?
That's been fixed.
Sales tax, we're paying sales tax? It's the same thing over and over. I mean, I know Les wasn't here last year.
They want to discuss it.
Same thing.
I want, I want something, I want a report in thirty days. What, what corrective action is management taking?
When did you get your report done? When did you get your report?
I don't know. That's management's problem. I want one in thirty days.
Well, you got the city manager, the mayor or city manager, right?
I mean, I, I, that's enough. I mean, fix it. Fix it.
We'll get you a recording.
Okay.
A lot of it we have been working on because there are people that we've gone out and collected taxes.
God deliver.
And have it collected.
And then they, they catch you and they still don't pay.
People sit around here in this room and we can play.
What they say to you, Ron, when you go out?
Um, I'm hoping you can rattle a little bit. Most of them are like, do what you gotta make us or whatever.
Do what you gotta do.
Maybe it's just, makes it work.
Hell, it can, can be.
And some shit was saying.
What can we do about this law?
Which is like.
Our one is creating a motion that's what we're doing right now.
I'm in motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor where there's something needs to be done.
Well, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
The other way now.
I.
I think there has to be a hearing for somebody to, 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 to take these when they have a complaint or come in and say, I'm not paying this because of this. And they got nobody, you got somebody sitting there, just like, just like parking tickets, you know?
Take these tests, I can talk that one.
I mean, are they, I mean, if they're not paying their taxes, they're not in good standing. They don't have, they don't have, they don't have the right to do business in town unless they're paying the taxes. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, how, if you don't pay your taxes, how you doing business?
They, they.
Maybe that's how Pico's do it. Pico's say, you want to run business until you pay your taxes. You're shut down until you pay your taxes.
You get served a subpoena to appear in court. Yeah, I don't, one technical client just had about two months ago. He was behind like three years. We got him done, and he had to get him done and get him paid before the court made to appear. And then Keith Hall, is he county attorney there?
Yes.
Okay, he had Keith Hall's court. He's either had to appear before, but they said if you'll get discarded away, you're done, then, then you're, you're done. You don't have to appear in court. But the money was there, the tax returns was there, and it got.
Sounds like it's going to a district court.
Yeah, it's going to district court. I don't have it in it.
We need to cure it because that's going to take, cure a lot of our problems. And half of them paying, half of them's not. It's not right. Well, you know, what's, it's, you can look at that many other ways. Fire service, police service, all that stuff. It's unfair. That's what you're paying for. That's what that tax pays for, for that type of thing, for us to be able to supply them with protection of all sorts.
Well, the fines need to be a little bit, I mean, I don't think in ten years you can even find me a hundred dollars for whatever, whatever.
Who says the time?
You on the ordinance.
The ordinance doesn't, I'd say we get that ordinance back up next meeting so we can look at it. We got a copy of that.
It should be a report that we're looking for.
Yeah, we need to find out what our options are, what we can do, what we can't do.
That's what I'm getting at.
I'll, I'll find out legally what we can do. I have to, I'll have to file our key to find out if they will pursue the charges.
Right.
And I don't care. I'll, we'll set up, or I'll set somebody up and go out and do this so we can work with the fire department and tow it for you to go out and do it. We'll, we'll take care of, we'll do what we're supposed to do if I can get somebody in for it.
You're talking about the ordinance you and, we looked over that one time. It was basically vague as to.
Yeah, you can't, it's just not enforceable.
So what you're saying is we need to make an ordinance that's enforceable. By you, I'll be able to do something.
I agree on that. That covers what you're going at.
You can't tell them to do something and not, not.
And this ordinance is probably years old too.
This week, well, you have officers working different sections.
See, the one thing I did different on our new tax forms was if somebody in the town issued a T ninety-nine to a person, they had to send me a copy of that T ninety-nine, and then I'm sending a tax form to that person.
So I get a list of every business within this city.
But I was back then.
I'm gonna make sure it's enforceable in court. I mean, that's, you know.
That's what I, that's what I said for mistake.
Nothing if it's like one of these.
Get your report.
Yeah.
And, and that's just talking about taxes, but the city business thing, that's what concerns me. If, if they're out here operating and they're not coming to get a business license off us, if we don't know the function in the first place, unless we like, look.
I would care to, I'm not paying.
Well, look, if we go out and they don't have a license, did you not say, Bobby, that you could take, you could pull their utilities at that point?
No.
Are you kidding?
I said, I said that's what needs to happen.
You said, okay, you said that's what needs to happen.
But, but it's not set up like that now.
I thought at some point, I said you could turn off somebody's utilities. I thought, I thought that you could.
If you're a landlord and you're renting out, basically, a lot of these utilities are in the landlord's name. You know, so basically, you, the landlord's paying his business license. Uh, so, you know, you're turning the person's paying their license utilities off the tenant just as use to those. So, no, it's, it's, it's a quagmire. I mean, trying to figure out who and what. We, we went through that ordinance. We, you know, we've sent letters that I've, you know, I've basically personally called too. And as, as to the attitude, you know, what you gonna do.
Well, I'll.
And be honest with the, the ordinance.
It sounded like the way we got, it's not working.
Let me ask you, we got, is not.
Well, can we contact legal cities and see what we can and can't do? Can we contact legal cities? See what we can and can't do.
Does the, the nine-one-one record that, that you maintain, does it say what's a residential and commercial on all, all those types? Nine-one-one records, does this, does this say whether it's a residential or a commercial?
Well, yeah, residential business, you know, ninety-nine cents.
So you got, I mean, you got that business.
I can't get those records out to go do that with. I mean, I can't like.
You can get into a city employees.
No, not nine-one-one records.
No, I think.
I'm talking about.
Is.
The address.
The address.
I have the address on my cat.
Can you determine all the commercial and all residential?
I can tell you what I have. Yeah, commercial, yeah, I can tell that. But I get my updates from Sharon, where Bobby brings me new stuff with, you know, my nine-one-one contacts. And then I update my system.
Like when a new, somebody moved.
Right, right.
I'll come up with the list.
You got control of new businesses. We don't have control of existing businesses.
As long as they come and, you know, see me, then we, you know, they're in my system and I get updates. Sharon gets updates.
I see.
I'll, I'll try to come up, I'll get as close as I can to the business. It's a bit difficult to look me up. But I've already dealt with some of these companies. They need some. I mean, it's just one of the things where I don't want to embarrass myself because that's what I'm doing.
Well, it sounds like our, our first priority is we need to see how far we can go.
Find out. Find out about court system.
What penalty can be at the max and, and then work it and see what happens.
And do it a lens.
Yeah.
I assume we'll get a report in thirty days going to tell us what we can.
Thirty days. It's something, we're gonna contact legal cities and see what we can do about this.
Do you, do you find that we'll do this?
I'll talk power if we're seeing more.
I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll give the key and power and see if they will, I mean, it's up to them what if they want, if they want to.
That's it. If not, we have to look at something else like we talked about before. We talked about this, again, it's been a while back. This came up once before, if anyone remembers, and we talked about the only avenue we had at that point in time, because they weren't going to enforce it criminally, was filing individual suits against individual businesses. So not, you know, I think somebody mentioned, can we do it a class action? I said, no, I mean, you've got separate defendants. That's what.
See, I thought maybe we offered a period of amnesty, let people come to us like the state did back in the fall.
No penalties if they pay within a certain period of time.
Well, we'll have to look at that when we figure out what our options are.
That's.
From current events, you know, these people haven't paid it, right or wrong, give them a chance to get it right before you really put some meat into this and get it straightened up.
Well, you say. They told me doing that, we give them.
We not officially.
Oh, we act as.
Yeah, but you didn't have, you didn't have anything.
Want to get ready to have me, but still.
You did. And I'm gonna quote Brian, basically, I said I'll pay him a hundred dollar fine. And that's all it was. All we start putting percentage on that. And these people haven't paid in five years. We say, all right.
I think, I think that is on it. It goes up a percentage a little bit, but it's not, it's not really.
You can make that as condition upon the, the leasing of any property by a landlord, a landlord, you know, I myself, I mean, I rent off of someone. So as a condition of my lease, I must show yearly business license. I mean, you, you could put that into an ordinance for people that have rental property in the city. And that would apply across most.
I wouldn't stress on the landlord, though, to require him to make whoever's leasing on him.
You might show once a year, a business license once a year. That's not too much pressure, I would think, on a level.
One thing about it is that those people are not complying. It's more just a business license. You're not getting a hundred dollar license fee. You're not getting one half percent of profit that they're making, and you're not getting one half percent of employees that's working there that's not paying them. So it's more than just a hundred dollar license.
Yeah, we're talking about.
There's a lot of money there.
Yeah. We're talking about, that's just the thing. But I was just saying, if they're just, if they're, if they're just stuffing it at a hundred dollar fine, they're not some way penalized more. And you're gonna file legal cities and find out, correct?
Right.
Each of your tax forms have a percentage penalty.
It's one percent, one half.
Yeah.
It's on the board.
It's percent, it's penalty about.
What is one point eight million dollars divided by eight? I mean, that'd be quite a bit. I don't have to look into that. If we're responsible for this, this over fifty percent, or whatever it might come out to be, forty-two percent, thirty-eight point nine, or whatever.
Most of you probably write a check back there, I'm sure.
You gotta write a check.
We got, we got to put some buy into the ordinance that will proceed to a successful even.
A tax on the child. With a tax on the child.
I saw it. I've got connections.
Well, you're worried about the other stuff. Is there anything else we need to go over?
I gave you all this little sheet here. So your sheet, let's look at these numbers real fast.
Well, I was worried of, and what I'm talking about mostly is the stuff that we done for the last, last time you did audit.
Oh, it's, it's some of the same stuff over and over and over. I agree.
We're not doing anything incorrect?
Yeah.
We are?
The P O system is in place. It's not fully implemented, but it's in place. The one place in the city that's not using P Os at all is Stonecrest, except one thing. I have got P Os on the tunnels. They're not using P Os. I think some of the inner department chair, maybe she left and don't know where, some of them are not using P Os, some are. That's the one that they're trying to fix. Gatsby thirty-four depreciation, that's probably fixed right now. She has got that going, so that's fixed. Somebody missed two forty signatures. That's just somebody that's not signed a check. That's probably.
Should it go, should it pass, uh, should it be paid at the bank account?
What?
I mean, shouldn't.
No, that's really a banking problem, the bank should not cash the checks, but I'm sure it says two forty signature required on it, that's really a banking problem.
But that's the same thing you wrote up last year.
Same thing, exactly.
How about on the sales tax? We're paying the sales tax, and we got the sales tax number.
How much, how much sales tax did we pay?
Four dollars.
It was a little, it was minimal.
Paying stations.
It was more than that.
The same thing?
It was more than that. I know it was sales tax payment, it was more than that.
How about the interest rate on the late charges, I saw where you rubbed that up.
Yep.
How much did that, how much did that manage it?
Was, was that going back, I couldn't remember, I mean, I can't seem to remember what it was. I know we did pay interest on late payments on a couple of things that, Suncrest.
But that same thing you wrote it flat later?
No, I didn't write that question.
You didn't write that down either?
The health insurance written that two years in a row, I didn't remember that.
I took my last year audit out.
Uh, I mean, I got the others, who was written up last year, I don't remember.
Yeah, well, I mean, I was thinking, well, you're right.
These late payments, what was the cause of that?
I don't know.
These late payments, what was the cause of?
It was a couple of Suncrests, I think the utility we also paid late, was it city utilities and then John Deere?
I thought it was something on the insurance or stuff, when we had a late one.
Well, what about the health insurance, what happened there?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I was, I was just talking, I, I don't remember when I worked here, they didn't pay the insurance that they took out of my paycheck, and they had to back up, and they should have done away with the policy. You remember that?
Um, I think so.
Yeah, well, it's still being done, is what I've been told. But that's been, I've been on secure, so you're talking about the last seven years for us, it's been done now.
Just kind of go back a little bit from our ordinance. Our ordinance under section six of penalties says that it's a class A misdemeanor, if you don't pay it, that's how Pac was doing it. You turn it in to District Court, they send them to court, it's a class A misdemeanor, they go to jail, that's how enforcement.
That's why I just want to keep, which basically they have to get them to write it up.
I mean, you got two avenues of enforcement, one, you can sue them civilly for the penalties and costs, it's right here, and two, it's a class A misdemeanor. I don't know what else we can do, put more teeth into than that. We just revamped this since like in two thousand eight, and added the buildings, it's just a matter of enforcement, you know?
I don't know, they're fine if they're two paths.
It's been on the books since two thousand eight.
What is a class A misdemeanor, as far as?
That's one year jail, that's a year in jail.
I'm pretty sure if they're facing the year in jail, they're having to.
I've never seen that.
I'm, I'm guessing thirty days is the right answer to that.
Boy, you really fixed things down that way, they can do judges.
It's, uh.
You boys are ready, we are. You guys are ready, we are.
You know, Ralph will start calling.
I was, I, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't make better up. Health insurance being late paid, that was known, what causes that?
Just procrastination.
We're going to be bad?
I checked the bills, um, this morning, and everything's current.
I just.
I don't pay them, but they, they get paid down the hallway, and everything as of today was current.
Did that, what, how far, how far past did it go, did it almost get canceled, don't you get a little grace there?
I don't remember.
Not really late.
We were probably on the skin of our teeth, nothing ever been canceled.
I didn't, I didn't know if we had money coming in, shortfall, couldn't afford it, that's why I asked.
No, it was taken out of your paycheck, I mean, it's not that couldn't afford it, it was taken out of the check, it just wasn't paid.
Some of it, I mean, there's different, there's four or five different types of insurances.
Well, the one I got from Hall Park Insurance, I thought they were going to cancel, because I hadn't paid the premium. I said, it's been taken out of my check, and they checked in, there should turn out, like, a bunch of them, but I wasn't knowing what the guy.
Several. Way to do.
They talked one time about doing a direct debit on some of these things, but, you bet. Whether sometimes they talk about doing a direct debit on some of these things where it's automatically going to be paid on time, and you didn't have to rely on.
Well, I mean, the problem is, you've got some changes that go between month to month, new ads, new drops, that, I mean, it just, it was, it's technically better to pay it monthly, where you can review the payroll, make sure.
Yeah, there's changes, you lose employees, gain employees, and you don't want that company siphoning out of your account.
Right.
So, well, it's something as simple as a credit card account, and you try to change, you have to close the account and start again, because they'll leech off of it. But I see why I wouldn't want to do the direct.
Okay, they have to, they, before we charge them with, with class A misdemeanors, we have to, the rest of stuff we have to. As far as the penalties, the, the twenty percent, twenty five percent, twenty five dollars, all that, in subsection threes.
So in addition, that's why you have to do the other first. I mean, we, we've been thinking this all day long, but to me, this is a management issue, all of it, all in thirty days, what management's going to do to address all these problems that have been listed and backed up on it for years, and I think the whole town of Pressesburg would like to know what management's doing, doing, uh, doing to address the problems that keep coming up every year, like, that's all I'm asking. And, you know, to say that it's our fault because we didn't pass an ordinance, well, here's the ordinance. It's up to you guys to enforce it. We don't do the day to day job of the city president. Well, I don't, I don't want to bore the fakers at this time. The enforcement and getting them to do that comes back from my buddy Jerry. And I mean, I, I don't want to get into it with the, with the employees. You know. Jerry needs to tighten his belt and look at this, and let's get it fixed. You know, everything I've ever asked him, he's always come back and helped me do it. If we brought it to his attention, we'll get a report in thirty days, what will do better, in the meantime, we're going to start working on this. Is that, that pretty close? And if you don't, we'll ride you some more. Hey, we're all in this together, I mean, I can't help, that's what we're here for. You know, while I'm here in time, come up and do this.
But is the police department's job to do all this, that you're talking about? I mean, I'm not trying to put the blame on him, but I mean.
Well.
Well, I guess when it hits the circle.
When it hits a certain point, it is, it is his job to make sure this is done.
That's what I'm saying, you know, but the way you're saying, is it, is it the police department's job to do all this?
I don't care how it gets, he can use it as a tool, but he needs to get that.
If it gets that far, when it goes that far, I guess, when it gets. I would assume, I don't know, but I would assume, you know, when you can't, when nobody can do it. I just feel like police department, I don't think you, he's walking here and do what the mayor was paid to do.
Roy Hallen.
And I'm not wanting, Mary, let me finish my act before you start, but that's the way I feel. I mean, you know, I'm taxpayer, just like everybody else sitting here, so. And, you know, we're wanting to take more places in, we can't take care of what we got. And it's a proven fact by the audit over, we can't take care of what we got in the city, because people present it, we won't pay it. So that tells me something right there, we don't need to take more in, unless we get a bigger truck to back in there. I think that's what we need. You know, like, selling watermelons, buying for a dollar and selling at the station, get a bigger truck. Where you making that, Angela Bassett, what's yours, or the city councils, say we need more property, but I don't agree with that. That's my thing, go ahead, Mary.
What I didn't want to do is get into with employees, our beef is with our mayor, I don't want employees to do that, and that's the point I was making. And I don't want to get in a peat match with either one of these officers or dispatchers or nothing, they're doing what they're told to do. All I was wanting to do is Jerry to tell them, go after them, like, get out of, let's get this done, that's all I was trying to do.
All right, I love you.
And you bet, it's been hard for the last, what, six months, five years?
No, no, man, am I saying that she's gone, but we, you know, we've opened a can of worms, we see a major problem. There's two big numbers on here that put me in shock tonight, that hasn't even come out yet tonight.
Right, and it's a little bit everybody, I mean, we kind of talked.
I mean, this was the, if you all see the, if you all see the new tax form that went out this year, this was the first step I made toward going after, and I'll give you guys a copy of it, to try to enforce and collect more of these taxes. Because the tax form that we've been using have been zeroed a thousand times where it just. They didn't take it serious, but, I mean, this one, I paid four dollars, I worked through, um, and it does. I mean, it does look a lot more professional, and it's written, and there's a section that says, did you issue ten nine nines? And I've been sending out, uh, copies of this form to anybody that's issued a ten nine nine in the cities, it's like, what is that about?
It's, it's a lot of money. I didn't realize this. You may not eat, but.
Who exactly do you think, the secretary, business owner?
Every business owner needs to copy that, and then, when they mail that to us, their sponsor says, did you issue ten nine nines to your employees?
So that's everybody's got a license, right?
Yes.
So we need to confirm the companies that, that are operating without a license, so we've naturally added two to this, and increased.
I've been trying to, because like, I mean, like I sat down one day and went through the yellow pages, and I started with the attorneys, because. And, you know, and it's like, you know, and then, you know, you get to certain ones, and, and I've called, and I've sent letters, and, you know, no response. And so now I've started documenting, I said, you know, here on, you know, January the seventh, I called and talked to, you know, Linda at this office, and I said, you know, I'm going to send you your forms, these are due, I'm giving you thirty days. And so, you know, I looked, and like the people I gave thirty days, I even called somebody CPA, I said, your client has not filed their taxes, and he laughed, he goes, I know, I gave it to him, he just didn't do it.
Well, it sounds like what's going on is, I mean, uh, Mike and their crew and, and you bet them has, has tried, from what I'm hearing, has tried to attack this, but apparently, they have a no care attitude.
You know, I spent four hours with one person.
The K R S that is going to be violation of the city ordinance, okay, that's the K R S one. Well, in order for you to violate city ordinance, they have, they have, we have to have a hearing, people hear from.
And that's what you've not had.
It's not, we don't have it, you go to the I M O and ask literally one, I tell you to do this, well, you got to do this, it's a violation of the city ordinance. Have they, we got to have it, we got to have it, unless we come up with something else, I cannot.
So what do you need, like, four counts?
Uh, well, somebody has to be in judge, see, same thing on bargaining, you have to have a hearing judge, you know, set up like line two or something like that.
He said traffic courts.
After hours.
Something similar to that, I think it's the deal on, on, anytime you write a violation of city ordinance, you have to, it has to be, it has to go back to change, they won't.
Now, this is before it would go to District?
Well, back when we tried to do this before, there was a lady that, that I had problems with, and I finally, after three days of working back force with, uh, the prosecutor's office, she finally agreed to pay it, but just because she didn't want hearing on that.
That is on traffic citation, or on something?
No, this was on, this was on her taxes.
On her taxes, okay.
Yeah, this is on, on taxes, but, I mean, just like work, they just say it's just, she didn't have to, you know, you know, she just didn't have to. And there's a, there's a certain attorney over here, she puts, it's not bad, so.
Present company excluded, between me and BD, I will say that when she says a certain attorney, it's not me, it's not BD.
No.
I can verify that.
Well, you know, we. Say Donovan Blackmore, City Manager, and see how they're actually enforcing.
Sharon and I thought about going to the city pop, that's what she said, me and Jason.
Can you give us back what we can, cannot do this, we now have thirty days, so we'll know what to do?
I would, I would love to, because it's going to pain, it's, it's not easy for me.
Well, it needs to be simplified.
The last time you all really got into it, you all really tried this, and they even have, there's no equals.
Did you all like this ordinance at that time?
No, that's just my opinion.
Okay, my question is, I, I, why don't we go ahead and publish this, have it published in the paper? Let's get this out, let's get this ordinance out there, and let these people know we won't come out. Because, I mean, honestly, I think if, if you didn't.
I did my job, I published it.
Ralph, you going to write us a story? It'll be a story.
That would be the very thing, is a front page story on it.
So it's a public, he's not access to, he's available, I'm serious, I mean.
You can title it fairness, Ralph.
Yeah. Sitting here wanting community centers, or wanting the lights up here in front of houses, and it's not like this, how do they expect you to do it? When you, when you not get anything done with it? When half the people's trying to help, and the other half's not, and don't work that way. I mean, it's certainly not working federally, with what's happening there, so, you know.
See, I even went to an employment office, and, you know, I said, can you, I said, if you go out and audit a business and find out there are delinquents, can you notify me so I can go after them too, and he said, no, and I said, well, I know some people that's not paying taxes, he said, tell me, I said, no, no. You know, look, why aren't they, why should I do their work, they're not going to help us.
We figured out what we're going to do, we're going to have a report back in thirty days for Jerry, and attorney's going to bring us what we can do.
Last thing I'll host, I know, despite the year, compared to the three, but I gave you that. I only gave you your. The first page, uh, all this is on the general fund, except one thing on the la, on the last page, I'll tell you, all this, this is where y'all budget, okay, the general fund. This is the difference in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, uh, in two thousand ten, you had a deficit, that's when you all wrote off, Archer Park debt, that's what created that problem. Uh, in eleven, twelve, it's showing, you know, a surplus, so that's good. Turn to the next page. Net assets are decreasing, uh, that is due to depreciation, and also because your cash is decreasing in the city. I'll show you where cash is at in a second, but these numbers include fixed assets less depreciation, okay? Flip to the next page. The debt is going down, went from one point two to a little over a million, uh, in two thousand twelve. I told you capital assets were decreasing, it's because of depreciation, it's been up from nineteen to eighteen, so that makes sense with the other page. Now, flip to the last page. Cash on this includes general fund and special revenue, the ones I told you about earlier. Your cash has went from one point two million to nine hundred and sixty two thousand, uh, at June thirty fourth. Your due from, which is your account receivable on your books, from Suncrest, uh, the Archer Park, and the Mac, you'll see is increasing also across the board. Another foreseeable problem with your books is, is your receivables actually collected? Can you collect that seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars? If you can, then your surplus is gone, you're back into a deficit, because you don't have true account receivable books, but we have this book as of right now. Has two hundred and twenty three thousand from Park, and five hundred and twenty two thousand from Suncrest, and Mac actually, the city owed, I think it's for some payroll reimbursement, if I'm not mistaken, forty two thousand dollars. This is a little bit easier to understand than how, I want to see, sure where your cash is at, and what everybody owes you, you know, inside the city. Ask you, I'll give you one question, that's all I've got. I'll throw them to Sam.
You got to explain those, we had. I need one of those, who got these for ordinances out here?
What is the?
Yeah, the mayor checked, obviously.
That isn't.
I didn't think he would, so. That's a June thirtieth?
Yes, I know that's right, that's June thirtieth, those are the true numbers, and what they're.
Well, what I ran into is, you know, you. Well, what I ran into is, you know, you show us a couple of numbers, then we talk about it. Well, that money came from here, and we borrowed money out of there, and we took that money and we switched it around, that's not really the right...
This one's right. I want, the bottom, the back page is the cash that you have at June thirty, and that is what the outside east is, the inside, oh yes. That's on, that's in the audit report. This comes straight off the audit report, these numbers did.
Just give me like a three-year comparison, rather than just one, nine, or four.
Yeah. I don't understand your question.
I was hoping you had a good, better answer. No, really, I have no idea, I mean, I'm there, I come to the meetings, we talk about it, we try to work within the numbers we've got, and this is just... We've made changes, we've already made changes. I sat on that board. And we've made, we've made drastic changes. And I know it's going to look better, but I don't know... I don't know how it got to that point. I expected around two, two forty. I had no idea it's going to be at that. It's twice, you know...
And I don't even know what it is today, and it could be worse, I have no idea. This is just back, I guess it's eight months ago, I figured it out.
Well, it's two, three years ago. That's accumulation. Does that, does it have an earmark?
Is that what?
What is it, an earmark? What is it made to get there?
What is what then?
What is it that made it get there?
It's payroll. Basically, what it is, the park and Stonecrest, how they monitor it with the city. Because they pay their bills, and they live over there, reimburse payroll, and when they don't have enough money, they don't reimburse payroll. And it's accumulated, and it still is accumulated.
And basically, this reflects what we all already know. Archer Park doesn't make money. Stonecrest Golf Course don't make money. Now the question is, what do we do with these amounts? I know before, we've written off some of these debts.
That's a transition decision, I can't tell you what to do. If you write it off, it's going to look terrible in the year you do it, it's going to be a terrible year.
It, I mean, I mean, I'm all buddy in on this, we do whatever. We can write it off, but it's, it keeps getting, it keep, the problem's not solved. Because we wrote it off a few years ago, yet we still have the problem, and we're writing it off again, and we still have a problem, except now, we're, we're getting to where it's starting to affect us here because that's cash that we're spending, but we're not getting back.
Well, I, but, but isn't the problem, the initial problem is getting fixed, as I understand it, government?
Right, and I mean, there aren't changes being made at Stonecrest, because I was up there the other day, and we were doing some cost analysis. What does it cost for someone to come up there and golf? If you were to, you know, what does it cost us? What does it cost us for someone to do a golf tournament? Are we charging enough money? I mean, those are some things, more stuff I'm working on, you know, we figure out, you know, if we have a tournament and we only, they only have so many people, then maybe we're better off not to have that tournament. Maybe we should say, you know, "If you want to have a tournament, you need to pay us X amount of dollars plus an amount for each person that golfs, because that's an opportunity cost." You know, we ran out that back building. Are we charging enough money to pay the electric bill, the insurance, the cleaner? You know, just those kinds of cost analysis. You know, do we need as many people working there that we have? You know, and you know, those are just different sets. Where can we streamline? But, you know, you've got yourself dug so deep in a hole, how do you get out?
Well, that's what I had thought, I know that Morris told me that there was some stringlining happening and going on to fix this. No, I mean, we'll go back to what you originally said, and that's what we do about what's on paper.
If you want to see the profit loss, you can go to page ten, I'll show you exactly the profit loss of all those outside east. I mean, as of June two thousand and twelve, the park lost ninety-seven thousand. Now, Art Center showed twenty-one hundred dollar profit. Stonecrest showed a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar loss. But now this includes depreciation, if you look up there to see what depreciation is too. And all these figures tie over to this report. But this will show you, if you want to see what they did, here's a number on page ten. You wonder if they lost money or made money.
What was the depreciation on that?
Um, it varies, I mean...
The, the park's depreciation...
Park's is twenty-two thousand.
How much was Stone?
Fifty-nine thousand.
Hundred feet thousand.
It's still, it's still a deficit.
And actually, in all reality, even bigger loss, if you look at the money that we put in it through coal severance and gas and tourism tax. If you add those together and lumped it on top of that, that would mean you'd have a lot more loss.
That's all I've got, yes.
That's a myth.
Is, is the equine center included in the park's numbers?
Park's number, it's part of the park.
Is it broken down on a profit, if it's got a profit or not?
No, none of this report won't be. The financial statements that they provided, they had it broken down. We can get that if you want.
You mean that up there as opposed to down here?
Yeah, they get separated, they get separated on the quine, and then, actually, the ballpark's separate, the skating rink, I mean, you separate all of them.
The only problem with Archer Park's financials is they don't have their payroll broken down as to what section. It just has one one some payroll, instead of saying, you know, payroll Archer Park, equine payroll Archer Park, all in here.
It'd be easy to determine that though.
Yeah, you pull out which employees work for them.
Can you get it set next two weeks or...
Yeah, what time you, what time do you want?
I'm just trying to figure out...
Where we're at right now?
Yeah, really, what, you know, I'm just curious what the equine center costs.
Costs operating?
What's it cost around the ball fields? You know, what, what does Archer Park cost us? You know, losing that kind of money.
Breakdown cost on every, every section.
They can do, you can do it in a quick book, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, I'm going to just split it up.
I could see where, make a shot on it, but Archer Park, it's still, I mean, it's a park for a minute, and I don't know that it's supposed, it's not, it's not need to be a moneymaker, I mean, it's supposed to be providing...
Well, it should be self-sufficient.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I don't think there's any way to expect certain things that are going to be self-sufficient as part of what we provide as the city government to the community. I mean, certain things are never going to make a profit.
Well, at the rate we're going though, we're, you know, you've got to mark police cars and fire trucks at the rate we're going, we got to make some drastic changes.
You got to use that in your calculations of what you're doing now, what you're doing going forward, but I mean, I think it's unrealistic to expect these projects to break even or make money. They're not going to, they never have, never will. If we can't afford it, then we're going to make a decision at some point. I don't think we're going to be able to sit here and say, "Okay, now, come back and fix it and make a profit." Ain't going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen, but I'd sure like to cut it out a little bit. I mean, if, if there's a place to do it, you know, a golf course is nice, we might not be able to afford it. I mean, that's big numbers. Scary big numbers. Coal severance slowing down, things are going on.
I'm looking for a bit of proof that audit that's been presented.
Make a motion.
Motion, say.
Say.
Those are the names. Motion to approve a resolution number one, two thousand and thirty.
A resolution of the city of Prescott, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with the department for the local government with the projects listed below to execute any documents which are deemed necessary by D O G to facilitate these projects and to act as the authorized course on for these projects.
Motion, so, say. Take it. Want to approve. They've been some requests for metal poles up in the subdivision of Stonecrest. And I think, Sharon, what is a dollar amount of load?
It's nine hundred and sixty dollars, probably called. And Ronnie said we take four on Ridgewood and probably three or four in front of the townhouse.
The, the company was putting those up, we have to put those up, and actually maintain meters. We sent them up there, and that's what wood poles, and I just want to put them up.
Where you got the money? I mean, that's a cold slap on that, I mean, where you got the money to do it?
May have just put the budget coming out, we'll make a tough look at see what we got, because I know what we're going to need. We've got, Martin, Martin, what we can do, what we can say, so...
I mean, I don't want to knock anybody, I mean...
Now, they're saying it's a safety issue, and like the mayor said, we sent R S C C, he did a...
Now, if it's a safety issue, we like the wood poles up, if that's the deal.
They turned the wood poles down, but they say...
If it's a safety issue, yeah, we're going to put the wood poles up and get some light up there, if it's a safety issue.
I'm just curious, the guy that actually initiated this email stuff that I, that letter that I got, I mean, was this the same guy that wanted the metal pole to come?
Well, I think originally, there was another neighbor or two before he got his, the guy that originally sent the email, he just completed his home. So the ones that turned away the wood poles, this guy didn't know about that till I told him. Because he was under the impression the city had done nothing up there. And I, he changed his mind a little bit when I said, "Now, you were offered poles," I said, "But your neighbors turned them down."
Yeah, what's the difference in that?
Well, see, it's underground wired up there.
Well, let me ask you...
And the other side has the decorative poles.
Was there any deal before all the wood poles?
Everything's supposed to be underground up there.
I mean, was there a deal with them saying we would give them metal poles a long time ago or something?
No, see, the other side and the other subdivision all has the metal poles, but that was done, I guess, when it was developed. And that's also, and he on this side, R S C C doesn't even offer the decorative poles.
So the decorative poles on the other side didn't cost us any money? And they're going to over here, because it's America.
Yeah.
But they're raising cane because it's a safety issue? But they don't want...
It's in the name of safety issue that they want decorative poles.
It's only unsafe, it's ugly poles.
If you want light, I mean, you've adopted, but I, I can't see the money right now, unless you show me where you're going to get it, and I don't know what to do on this.
Well, just a real quick suggestion here, is, you know, they're really concerned about the safety. We put the wood pole up, which is going to lie by across the scene, is that correct? Because it might even come available. Then we, yeah, then we work with them.
I think we start to pay something per pole with R S C C, things like a hundred and fifty a pole or something. Their poles are free like...
And each of these new poles are nine hundred?
Nine sixty.
Nine sixty?
And we have to go with it?
We have to set them up, they come set them either, that's it.
Well, I would argue that, fine, it's as long as that, I don't see it...
I, I can't see it either, and I really don't want to make a, I, I don't want to make a decision on it tonight. I need to come up with a better plan in two weeks from now. Let's see what we can do, if we can find some money, see what's going on, I can see their point.
You know, in their mind, it's not fair, the other side has that, but they don't realize the cost.
Let's see where they're going, the way it is, where it's at, and it is pretty nice. If we can find some money, let's look. And on this particular thing, I'd like to take a look to it. Next move, then make a decision.
I live on the doggone main road, they ain't got no metal pole.
Did I give them a poll, did?
Any other U business?
Uh, yes. Uh, we've had several complaints from neighbors of people with animals or dogs walking their dogs and letting their dogs make messes on sidewalks and in people's yards. And I would like to please, some way publicly, let everyone know that we do have an animal ordinance now, and each person that has a dog or any other animal that causes a mess either in a yard or in, in any public place is responsible for removing that mess before they go back home. They're called doggy bags. So I would just like to bring that up for the purpose of so many complaints that I've gotten. And I think City Hall has, has received some calls. So let's, some way or another, please remind people with animals, they need to be on a leash, and they need to have their mess cleaned up before they, if they use someone else's yard, and before they leave.
Is that something Ralph, he's different play with it?
Change that headline, who hits the thing?
Well, I can't unpause the vote, and I don't know if y'all rested last, I don't know if y'all rested the last meeting or not. The police department, fire department dealt with two meth flabs down here at Green Acres. Three weeks in? And just from my prior experience, that can be a very dangerous situation. You're talking about explosions, a lot of people, a lot of contamination. I just want to give them a good shout out there for the job they did down there. The guy took it, the guy eliminated, took care of the problem.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you.
Any other U business?
Don't move.